All right, you ready? He's rising. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Join me in a moment's prayer. All right, we will call this meeting to order. Are there any visitors' remarks concerning the agenda?
The very first item is, it says, "Due to a misunderstanding of information presented..." I don't think there could have been any misunderstanding unless Commissioner McLanko hasn't been paying attention to the ethic rules for the last 20 years. He was not allowed to vote on that, and this is the third time that's happened this year. I would recommend this boarding board require him to take ethics training, since we're in June, and it's three times now that he has violated the Ethics Act. And there's a Sunshine Act violation, I believe. You're backdating all of your hires, not just on this agenda, but all of them, it seems, to hiring people before you vote to hire them. It kind of just seems like you're trying to make your illegal actions moot by doing that, because you've hired everybody and then you vote to hire them. If you don't think so, I'd like to have explained to the public what would happen if you voted no on hiring somebody after they've worked here for a month, or voted no to reduce their pay after it's been reduced for weeks, or increase their pay. How does that work out if you guys had decided to vote no on that? And I'm curious if that's ever happened before, and what happened? It doesn't seem logical at all, unless you're violating the law. Thank you.
All right. And to answer that question, these hires are administrative in nature. They are not outside the county's budget. The budget has already been voted on at the beginning or actually the end of last year. There are no positions being added, there's no salaries, so those are administrative in nature. We're simply acknowledging that that's already been done.
Then why do you vote no?
It's not back and forth, it's, we're not doing anything illegal, trust me. All right. Unfinished business. Consider approving the minutes of May 22, 2025.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. New business. Due to a misunderstanding of the information presented at the May 22, 2025 meeting, Doug McLanko inadvertently voted on a sub-recipient agreement for the Salvation Army. We're considering rescinding the vote for the sub-recipient agreement of the Salvation Army.
So moved.
Second. All right, we have a motion to second, and you're abstaining, correct?
Yeah, but I'd just like to say that I have no official role at the Salvation Army. I volunteered like everybody else for 30 years. I don't have a paid position, so although, you know, this is just housecleaning, I don't feel anything was done wrong, and we just need to do this because, just to make sure that, you know, that, I don't know why, but, so at any rate, I just want people to, especially to know that, you know, like everybody else, I volunteered for a long, long time. I love the Salvation Army, I have no official role, I just head up their meetings, and I also am absolutely not paid, never have been.
All right, thank you. Yep. We have a motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. With one abstention. Now, consider approving a sub-recipient agreement between the Salvation Army and Bradford County for community development block grant money in the amount of $21,576.82.
So moved.
Second. Motion to second, and I believe another abstention, correct?
Yes.
All right. All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now...
What's that? With the one abstention.
With the one abstention. Consider proclaiming June 2025 as Dairy Month in Bradford County, and I believe we have Dairy Princess here? I had a look around.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sophia Tyes. I am currently serving as your Bradford County 2025, 26 Bradford County Dairy Princess, and I'm also joined here with some of my team, and raise the hand where you can. Thank you all for coming. I appreciate you all being here. So I'm going to be reading the Dairy Month proclamation. Whereas, dairying is the branch of farming devoted to the production of milk, and many trades and industries are dependent on milk to make such products as butter, cheese, yogurt, ice cream, and many other byproducts. And whereas, today's farmers not only needs to be concerned with what the general public sees as the dairy farming chores and responsibilities, such as the care, feeding, and milking of cows, but needs to be aware of barn housing, the most effective and economical feeds, disease and stress prevention, and milk prices. And whereas, our dairy farmers need our support as they compete with today's industry demands. So, let us support a way of life which has lasted centuries and will meet the next century with confidence and determination for its survival. And whereas, we need milk to become healthy and fit for the new horizon of the 21st century. And the 2025 Bradford County Dairy Princess has been selected to help in the efforts of promoting this industry. Now, therefore, because of the importance of the dairy industry in the Bradford County, we, the Bradford County Commissioners, proclaim June 2025 as Dairy Awareness Month in Bradford County to honor those who choose this way of life, which is demanding in every aspect, as well as to educate the public and to help promote this valuable commodity. And witness whereof, we have here unto set our hands and cause the seal of the County of Bradford to be affixed this 26th day of June 2025. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I proudly move to proclaim June 2025 as Dairy Awareness Month pursuant to the proclamation as read by the Dairy Princess.
And I will second that motion happily, on behalf of my father-in-law, who will be 86 years old this coming month and still melts morning and night. Wouldn't give it up for anything. Proud dairy farmer.
Make sure you drink some whole milk this week.
Have some ice cream.
Have some ice cream, cheese, whatever, yogurt.
Yogurt, goddess cheese, yeah. All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider proclaiming July 4, 2025 as Independence Day in Bradford County, and...
There should be, there's a copy out there.
I need a copy. All right. Proclamation, Independence Day, July 4, 2025. Whereas, of all the days in the year, the primary one to us as a nation is the 4th of July, the anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. And whereas, on this day, we renew our allegiance to the Union, to the principles of self-government, and to the spirit of freedom, which is the source of its strength. Deeply aware that in many quarters of the globe, this freedom is now threatened as never before. And whereas, the freedom of mankind is indivisible, and our land must play a central part in defending and developing the well-springs of freedom, not only for ourselves, but for our friends and allies. Whereas, this year being the eve of the 250th anniversary... See, it didn't suggest, whatever, it just, it was the 250th anniversary. It's on this paper. Of the signing of our Declaration of Independence by the forefathers of our country, and now, therefore, we, the Commissioners of Bradford County, confident that July 4 will be observed as an occasion for the traditional ceremonies and civic activities, call upon the people of Bradford County to observe July 4 as the beginning of a national year of dedication to the goals of free men. Let us use our liberty with honor and purpose, sharing it with our fellow citizens and as free and responsible citizens of the United States of America, building a just and peaceful world for our children here, and a home for our neighbors around the world, as we proclaim July 4, 2025, as Independence Day in Bradford County. Adopted this the 26th day of June 2025.
Mr. Chairman, happily move to proclaim July 4, 2025, as Independence Day in Bradford County.
I will happily second that. Is there any further comments?
No, I think...
Go ahead, go ahead, Doug.
I would challenge everybody to read the Declaration of Independence. Take a minute to read it. If you want to see brave men, they basically signed their death warrants on that historic day. And if you want to see tough, brave men, read it. It'll really humble you out for the day to know what men did to give us the freedoms and liberty that we have for today.
Absolutely. And, you know, this, as we look at it, it's over there, Randy's shoulder there, you know, that is a culmination of a lot of events, of men and women really committing themselves to understanding what was at issue, and what they needed to do to finally be able to break that chain of tyranny. So I second what Commissioner McLanko said. You have a copy up there, if you're good at reading cursive, I encourage you to do that. It's obviously available in a number of different media, but read it. That is the culmination of a lot of men and women making the decision, and thankfully, we are the beneficiaries of their bravery.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving a Medical Assistance Transportation Program Participation Grant Agreement in the assurance of compliance with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Human Services, effective July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026.
So moved.
Second. All right. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the best transit Third Quarter Medical Assistance Transportation Program report.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider approving Resolution 2025-15 for CDBG modification to the fiscal year 2022, Community Development Block Grant.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Dwayne, I'm sorry, Liz. Just a little summary. So what is the modification here, just generally speaking?
Yep, so I'll speak to this one and the next one.
Thank you.
They're a multi-year. Child Hunger Outreach Partners was awarded a grant in 2020, 2021, and 2022. It was originally for the repair of their roof and for the creation of a community space on the second floor. When the architects and the engineers got in there, they realized that the second-floor community space was not going to be feasible, so this is a modification of those funds to other needed repairs on the building, which will be brick repointing and masonry work and replacement of the deteriorated outside windows.
Right. All right. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And now, consider approving Resolution 2025-16 for CDBG modification to the fiscal year 2021, Community Development Block Grant, which again was elaborated.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving Resolution 2025-17 for donation of $20,000 to New Albany Borough for cost related to the repair of Township Road, and I believe that's Patton Hill Road, if I'm not mistaken, due to storm damage.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
My understanding is this is going to be primarily for engineering costs?
Well, that's, yes, cost-related.
Oh, cost-related, okay.
Yep. All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the reappointment of the following people to the following committees of the Northern Tier Regional Planning and Development Commission for the 2025, 2026 year, and names per the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the agreement with CSG Fork Payments Incorporated in Bradford County for the online payment processing services.
So moved.
Motion to second. Any further discussion?
So I think my understanding is with our new website, this will be a part of the website, so that for different things that have a payment that's owed to the county, individuals will be able to make payments directly online.
Yep.
So I think it's to help citizens and residents have a chance to make payments.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving a letter of support for GoRail urging conquerors to reject transportation reauthorization policies that would allow 91,000-pound trucks on local and state highways.
So moved.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the renewal of an agreement between Tyler Technologies, Inc. and Bradford County for Vetrespec Software.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. This is for software for veterans, service officers' use. So we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving an amendment to the agreement between Bradford County Children and Youth Services and Service Access Management, Inc., effective July 1, 2024, through September 30, 2025.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving an agreement between Bradford Sullivan Early Intervention and Just for Kids, Inc., effective July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2027.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Ma'am, do you know what this concerns? Just for kids?
It's an occupational therapy group.
Okay.
So they've done business with us for 15 years.
So it's just another, okay, thank you.
Just a renewal. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the contract for professional services between Bradford County Human Services and the United Way of Pennsylvania for Continuum of Care Housing Problem-Solving Initiative Funds, effective until December 31, 2025.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the contract between Bradford County Human Services and the Main Link for Homeless Assistance Program Funding, effective July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the contract between Bradford County Human Services and SAMP Towanda LLC, Doing Business as Roadway, in for Bridge Housing Program Funding, effective July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the amended agreement between Bradford County Human Services Agency and the following HSDF providers per the agenda, effective July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion?
HSDF, just for the benefit of everybody, what does that stand for?
Human Service Development Funds.
Thank you.
That was part of our public hearing, where the public was invited and jaded whose public, and each of those providers did a presentation for us on their proposals.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the agreement between Bradford Sullivan County Intellectual Disabilities and Autism and the following providers per the agenda, effective July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving an amended agreement between Bradford Sullivan County Mental Health and the Main Link, effective July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the sale of parcel number per the agenda at a repository sale as outlined in Section 627 of the Pennsylvania Real Estate Tax Law, Act 542 of 1947, to Deborah DiCarmo Andrate Santos for $300. I apologize if I mispronounced the names.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
So just for clarity, on this motion, which is for the parcel ending 014-001, this is, I believe, a mobile home? Yes, so even though it says parcel, it's a tax parcel, but it's for the mobile home?
Yep.
Okay.
No, we'll handle it. All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the sale of parcel number per the agenda at a repository sale as outlined in Section 627 of the Pennsylvania Real Estate Tax Sale Law, Act 542 of 1947, to the same individual for $500, and again, I add, is a mobile home.
Right, and again, go ahead. So he moved, I'll second, and again, so that 031-002, it's going to the same buyer, but it's for a different mobile home, a different municipality.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving a purchase of service agreement between Bradford County and the following providers, effective July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026. Names per the agenda. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Ma'am, again, these are for, are these for placement locations for use?
For children, maybe, yes.
Okay. We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the hires and transfers from Willard Stoll down through and including Catherine White.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Other business. Bridgette Andrewash has been transferred in response to a court order by the Court of Common Pleas from probation officer trainee to full-time probation officer, effective June 9, 2025. And Angela Northrup has been transferred in response to a court order by the Court of Common Pleas from Administrative Assistant 2, Public Defender's Office, to Administrative Clerk 3 in the Office of Magisterial District Court, 42-3-01, effective June 9, 2025. Gabrielle Lathrop has been hired in response to a court order by the Court of Common Pleas as an intern for the Court's, effective June 10, 2025. Natalie Williams has been hired in response to a court order by the Court of Common Pleas as an intern for the Court's, effective June 16, 2025. And executive sessions were held on the following dates and times, June 2, 2025, from 10:25 a.m. to 10:57 a.m. Discussion of potential discipline for specific current employees, and 1:33 p.m. to 1:45 p.m. for discussion with counsel concerning Bradford County Case Number 2025 CV-0078. June 9, 2025, at 10:31 a.m. to 10:53 a.m. Discussion of negotiating strategy related to the prison union contract, 11:25 a.m. to 11:46 a.m. Discussion of a potential discipline of a current employee. June 16, 2025, from 10:10 a.m. to 10:47 a.m. To discuss the discipline of three current employees. And June 23, 2025, 11:47 a.m. to 11:52 a.m. To discuss questions for legal counsel, for legal counsel regarding the Bradford County Case Number 2025 CV-0078. And we will hear a report now.
Just a quick, just for clarity's sake, I think there's a misspelling on the June 2, 2025, just for everyone's benefit, where it says discussion with counsel, that should be C-O-U-N-S-E-L, referring to an attorney. There was not a counsel. It was, so just for clarity's sake. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Now, we will hear a report on the semi-qucentennial, whatever you want to name that.
Semi-qucentennial.
Okay. You know, that's in my head, and I'm thinking about, that's what I'm reading, messing it up.
All right, we haven't been here for a couple of months, so this is an update of where we are with the committee at this point. We do have Facebook presence now. We're set up as a page for America 250 PA Bradford County. We're posting our minutes on there and photos, things as such. The Liberty Tree, which you planted in October, is triple the size it was when we planted it. I've been downwatering it during the heat wave, so it's growing very nicely, so that's a good deal. America 250 PA has grants. We had two places in Bradford County apply in the last round, and neither of them were given grants, but they will continue to apply, so hopefully. Fireworks are July 4, 2026, and the committee will be working on that agenda for the day in the near future. Revolutionary War Veterans Plaque, the Subcommittee for the Plaque have compiled their list of people to be listed on the plaque. Cindy Holdridge has compiled nine binders of information on the veterans that she has collected. She currently has a small army of volunteers across the county, taking photos of every Revolutionary War grave site. We need to decide on a place to put the plaque at the courthouse, and the dedication of this plaque will be on Memorial Day, 2026. The Bradford County Historic Marker Fund for 2026 has been budgeted to cover that. We would like to purchase 13-star Betsy Ross flags for the Revolutionary War veterans' graves in the county next year. They are $2.56 each, and we need approximately 300 flags. The Veterans Affairs Office was contacted, and we were referred to the Commissioners, since this is not in their budget. We will stage replacement events across the county for Memorial Day, 2026. This is a great way to involve kids, scout troops, et cetera, to get involved in that. The Historic Marker booklet has been updated and is ready to go to print. Bradford County Historical Society wrote a grant, room for tax grant for that project. We still need $1,000 to complete that process for our match. Liberty Bell Project, Shawna Casey of Ylusing submitted a design for the bell, which we're really excited about. The Pennsylvania America 250 Committee was meeting last Friday to review this, so we'll hear what's going to happen with that, but we really, really beat bushes to get somebody to do this, and across the Commonwealth, it was the same. People didn't understand it, they didn't know what they were getting into it, but we posted on our Facebook page one that's been completed and dedicated, so people can see what it is. So it's really a neat thing. The school reading program, we have a letter ready to go to the program, to the principals of all the elementary schools, to the ABCs of Pennsylvania history, and I don't think that'll be any problem. We will be kicking off the semi-quintennial year at the Sayer Christmas Parade. The theme this year is Christmas in America. The parade is November 28th at 6:30 p.m. The Parade Committee has already had inquiries regarding patriotic floats. We do have a commemorative design for the Commissioner, the wooden coin, and we're going to have to make a decision on how many of those are ordered in the near future. So I'll give all that stuff to Michelle. The public libraries are working on a program for the semi-quintennial year, and we will schedule that on our master list. The William Salisbury Elephant Stick, and that's really a substantial thing. We're currently trying to acquire this stick from the National Archives, because we found out that that's where it is. If not, we need a good photo of it so that we can make a replica. Nathan Schoonover has a team prepared to walk this stick from Philadelphia back to Bradford County. Mr. Salisbury was involved in the Boston Tea Party and a Revolutionary War soldier. He migrated to Bradford County to settle after the war and is buried here. Congressman Musa's office is going to help us with the contacts we need to make to make this happen. There will be historic portrayals done during the year. We'll be making decisions on who will do the portrayals, and then we'll have a list available for people to request presentations across the county. We are asking every town in the county that has a concert series to please have one concert during the 2026 year devoted to patriotic music. Arts for Sayer next year, which is a huge event, has named their event for 2026, American Splash. That'll be the first weekend in May, so that'll be another event that'll be happening during the semi-quintennial year. French Asylum, we have a Revolutionary War reenactments during the summer of 2026, and they're currently working on a date for that. The Sullivan's March Video Project, which I think is going to be one of the most exciting things we do. Steve Burwick is working on this diligently. He made a trip to Philadelphia to get a photo of the Liberty Bell to include in the video. He digs into the subject. I know it will be very informative and enjoyable, and we will be rolling this out in early 2026 with an initial showing at the comm center and the communications building, and that'll be the Commissioner's group that they want to invite. We'll be offering it to clubs and organizations for meetings across the county after that, before we go viral with it. We want to be able to have people understand it and get it. And I really am excited about that, because that's an amazing story.
Yep.
And it's going to be from Wylusing to Athens, what he's doing the video on, and I think when people see that, they're going to be really dumbfounded. The Sayer Historical Society has its exhibit set up on Milltown. The exhibit will be in place until the end of 2026. So far, visitors to the Sayer Museum have been fascinated by the village that existed in that area in the early days of Bradford County. And just as a sidebar, Milltown's not too far from Spanish Hill, and as we all know, in 1615, the first white man that set foot in what is now the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, set foot at Spanish Hill in South Waverly. So when they say it all began in Philadelphia, it didn't all begin in Bradford County in 1615. We do plan to do the photo display boards throughout the courthouse and decorate the building with historic bunting for the entire year. We'll need to meet with Michelle Shen to plan this and set up a schedule, and we also need to buy 52 easels, because the easels that we used before fell apart, so, but that was 12, 14 years ago, too, so. America 250 PA has now got a quilt in process. Mary Lou Palmer, Cindy Holdridge, Peggy Kramer, and Lou Taft are making a quilt in a patriotic pattern. That will be shown across the county. We would like to sell chances on it and raffle it off at the Wylusing Valley Museum quilt show, which will be, they will be doing in '26 with the patriotic theme. The quilters are extremely talented, and this will be a real showpiece. We are requesting that groups that are planning an event around the semi-quintennial share your information with us, so we can put it on the master schedule. Kane Chamberlain is planning a Sesquahana River paddle to coincide with the Burwick Video Project. There is a parade planned in Philadelphia on Friday, July 3rd, and I think that's where the flag thing came from. 2026, it's a salute to independence. They're looking for every county to have two special parade elements, and I'm not sure that we can provide that or not. I mean, we can put the word out there, and people want to volunteer to do what they can, but I think that's a bit, a pretty big step for somebody to participate in parade in Philadelphia, so.
Right.
Now, here's the unfortunate news. We sent out 108 letters to businesses, military groups, clubs across the county requesting sponsorships for the semi-quintennial year. We've had two responses, each for $100 from individuals. So we really need some businesses to step up to the plate and do some PR with this and make a presentation, because we can't do a lot of this stuff unless people support us. So everything that we plan to do is going to be predicated on what we get as far as funding, so that's how it'll all be. And that's, go ahead.
Thank you, Kim. And we want to thank you and everybody involved in this for all the work you're doing. This is a huge, huge project. I mean, people don't realize the magnitude of what this is and what this is means to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and our country, quite frankly.
I'm doing a day a week right now.
Yep.
Cindy Holder, I mean, she's living with it all. Her house, her husband hates us. He's got the stuff all over the place, so.
That, that bell is a full-size replica?
No. It's, it's three feet by three feet, and it's styrofoam, and it's painted. It's in this mall.
Thank you.
Yes.
I can only start with here, Henry. And I, first of all, thank you guys for all you're doing. It is incredible, and I'm sure that you're probably leading the state, especially to trust Italians in what you're doing. I doubt there's any more people working as hard as you are, and appreciate it. Could you expand a little bit more on those 13-star flags that you're doing? Did I hear you correctly that, how many did you need?
300. They're $2.50 each. They're for the cemeteries, the graves.
So I will just tell you this. If there's no funding anyway, I personally will buy those flags. So I think that's terrific that you're doing that. I think it's terrific to know how many Revolutionary War veterans there are in our county, because without those brave men, we wouldn't be sitting here today. So thank you very, very much.
We actually have close to 400. There are some that do not have grave markers, so, you know, that's great that we're getting this all documented at this point. But thank you, Doug, and we're going to have to do that soon, because if we don't order that stuff now, we're not going to have it for next year.
Just let me know, just let me know what I can do. By the way, I was more than a supervisor in Pond Hill Cemetery. Most people would not know where it's at. It's in Wysock, up by what Big Center House used to be. And it was overgrown, and actually, the township had to, we had it all cleaned off. We had the headstones reset. But I remember mowing it, and I had my mower deck really high, because it was pretty much in disarray, and there was a Revolutionary War marker.
Yeah.
And it really made me stop to think how terrible, and that's why our township stepped up to the plate, and we took care of it, because, you know, here laid a man that fought for our freedom, and he deserved, you know, his grave deserved much more than there. But thank you, Henry, very much. Let me know what I can do, and I appreciate what you do.
Okay, thank you. This, for the, this is what the bell looks like.
I'm just concerned, because it's probably going to shove it like a rod. I don't know what I'm going to need to move it, that's all.
It's styrofoam.
Okay.
So it's actually.
It'll be fine. Alright, moving on, salary board. There's no unfinished business, new business. We have Matt Allen, our treasurer.
We still use the public comment for the salary board?
So noted. We have Matt Allen, our treasurer, as a member of the salary board. We will set the grades of salaries from Willard Stoll down through and including Catherine White.
I'll make that motion for the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Matt.
And just for clarity's sake, I think Chris, it says Kristen Seeling. I think it's Kristen Seely. I think it's just a misspelling.
Assessment board, unfinished business, there is none.
Central Act violation, no public comment hearing.
So noted. New business, consider approving the following for tax exemption, veterans' exemption renewals, Sandra Love and Ralph Rathman.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And VA exemptions, new, Diane Barr and Alan Weddington.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Alright, moving on, visitors' remarks. First one is, and I apologize for maybe not being able to pronounce the name correctly.
It's Vicki Jow.
Okay. If you would, two minutes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Vicki Jow. And this is my son, Jacob. He disappeared June 21st of 2024 after jumping out of my vehicle. He came home from rehab, and within two and a half hours of coming home, he jumped out of my car and disappeared and passed out that heartbreak time. And there has not been a legal search done because of a statement by one person stating they saw him on the bridge the day after he disappeared, moving the location from Wysock to Tawanda. Changed what they said was his location, and the state police would not drop it and let me bring it to Tawanda Borough because it was their case and they were in charge. My son went to rehab on state parole, and the agreement with state parole and rehab was that if he was to be released before the 26th of June, state police would be called, or state parole would be called to go back to jail. They were, that was not done. They released him and brought him home to my driveway and dropped him off after putting him on breathing antidepressant in a matter of 16 days, and he had bipolar and ADHD. I'm looking for my child, who I have not seen or heard his voice in over a year. I cannot get anyone to do anything to help me find him or hold anyone responsible for the disappearance of my child. I called the state police seven days straight, an hour after he disappeared, asking them to please help me to find my son. They would not put a mental warrant out on him unless they knew where he was at. We couldn't find him. They wouldn't look for him. They told me after seven days, they did a missing persons report. They did not. They did a BOLO, feet on the lookout. They didn't do a legal missing report for over 30 days. Does she not have a pro parent ever? And we are now in for a year, and there is still been no, no texts, nothing. And when he disappeared, all he had was a t-shirt, shorts, and shoes.
Alright. Thank you, Vicki. And if anybody, like, if any of the media has any questions for Vicki, I'm sure she'll stick around and you can answer any questions.
Yeah, I have one more comment, Matt. I want to know why local, when they were called, only did it once.
Nice. Alright.
It's heartbreaking, by the way.
It is. Howard and Melissa Tice?
Yeah, he thought we had to sign in.
Oh, okay, there you go. Alright.
Sorry.
Jack Dillman.
Right here. Why I feel silly after all this important stuff going on. My name's Jack Dillman. Should I stand?
No, it's whatever, however, whatever.
My name's Jack Dillman. I, I'm a volunteer. I'm a person in long-term recovery. 37 years ago, I put a cork in a bottle. I work in a jail as a volunteer. I work in the rehabs as a volunteer. So a lot of people that I've seen over the last couple of years go out and without a chance of survival. I talked to these men that, you know, that I work with. I probably interviewed well over 100 of them, asked them, what's the biggest need that you have to survive when you leave here? Their number one thing was a safe place to go. So they're putting me back out on the street. They're putting me back in my neighborhood. I can't survive there. Second thing that they needed was, was some type of job training, some type of an ongoing, you know, partial counseling. I worked at halfway houses and rehabs out in California and in Mississippi, and we need one here. I'm currently looking for a piece of property in the Tawanda Borough, something within walking distance of where there's counseling available, where they can, you know, walk to probation, where they can walk to the recovery house in Tawanda, you know, for meetings. But I'm looking to buy, you know, a piece of property and open up a facility, probably something about eight beds is what I think would, would be doable and...
Alright.
Is that my team?
Yep. Thank you. Very much appreciate it. And thank you for what you're doing. It's very important. Alright, Stacy?
Oh, she was with me.
Oh, okay, alright.
Can I use her two minutes?
Alright, Walt?
I was curious on a couple of things. Are there any mold issues in the current Human Services Building, considering the leak issue that's been going on? Has there been any testing or anything?
I can't, Diane, don't know.
That would be a question.
That would be a question for the landlord.
Are you three, the Commissioners, still discussing whether or not to move Human Services to the Plaza Building?
It's, it's a topic of discussion, but there's no decisions.
Okay, so you guys are discussing it, but you haven't made a decision yet?
I think we're, I'll, I'll respond after your time.
Okay. You said that all the hires are administrative in nature?
Yes.
So if they're administrative in nature, why do you need to vote on them?
It's a question we're going to ask, because they are in fact administrative in nature.
Okay. And you're saying they're administrative because you have the funding to hire the people?
And there's no right. Unless we create a position, create a new position, or change something as far as the salaries go, they're administrative, because they've already been approved. The positions and the salaries have been approved in our budget.
Well, like Judith Evans, you reduced her salary. Is that administrative as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And you don't think that the public should have any input on whether or not you hire a particular person?
It's part of the salary board process.
Well, salary board is salary, but I'm talking about the hiring to begin with. You don't think the public should have any say in whether or not you hire somebody?
The salary board meets, I believe, at 10 o'clock Monday mornings. That's when the salary board officially meets.
And you guys discuss at Monday morning, all salary-related stuff, and then you put it on the agenda?
Yes.
And you don't think that should be in a public meeting?
It is a public meeting.
It is not a public meeting? I went to your public meetings. You said no video recording. There was no agendas. You destroy the agendas afterwards sometimes, and there's no public comment allowed in it. It is not a public meeting at all by state law. So you don't think the public, there should be a public meeting for the salary board?
There is a public meeting. I'm not even getting back and forth. There is.
You're, you're lying to us right now.
No, I'm not.
That is not a public meeting.
Great. Thank you. Russ?
Where, so you're, you're considering moving the Human Services Department?
We're not, it's just a topic of discussion.
To move it to the Bradford Town Center?
No, we're not talking, it's just a topic of discussion.
But why would you move it there?
We're gathering information about what the options are, the current status of this building, other options. That's, it's informational to try to understand what our options are.
But, but when he says move to the Plaza Building, he's talking about the Bradford Town Center?
I don't believe, well, I don't know what he's referring to, so.
The one plot, what is it, one plaza, the, the one that, the?
North Tawanda, where the?
Right at the bridge, right here.
Oh, you mean, okay, I know what you're, okay, the progress of the already.
Yes, that one.
Right?
Yeah.
That's been one part of the discussion, James. That's it. It's just a topic of discussion.
Okay. The, okay, where does the funds come from for, for the $20,000 to give to the new?
Act 13.
Okay. And is that road, you said it's Peltin Hill Road?
Patton Hill, Peltin Hill.
Peltin Hill, I believe. Is that, is that closed, or?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, and, and what's, how much money is, I think you're getting a grant from United Way of Pennsylvania, it's going to Bradford County Human Services, or is that, I'm not understanding?
Name.
Yep. So Mary Stewart, our housing specialist, applied for that, and I believe the amount is $30,000.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Thank you. And it was specifically for service needs outside of what the service definitions that are outlined by PATH. They go above and beyond what we can do with PATH. So they're just unique, different needs. So they're just unique, different needs. I think one was like daycare for a parent in poverty to pay their daycare, transportation. There were just new, new things identified that we could use the money for.
For people that are homeless?
Housing, yeah, housing specific.
You're homeless people?
Housing and security, yes.
Okay. So they might not have lost their house, they might be in danger of losing their house?
Right.
Okay. And?
Mary could give you more specifics, James.
And then also, do you have, I think you, there was a contract that you approved, that the commissioner just approved between the county and the homeless assistance program at the Main Link?
Yep.
Are you, could that be affected by federal budget cuts, by the funding for that, that President Trump was proposing, or the Congress was proposing?
Possibly. We won't know until we know. But yes, that is one of the funding streams that is mentioned.
Is that, is most of the money federal, or?
No, nope.
Mostly it's from the state?
Federal, state, and county manage.
Okay. So it sounds like most of it's from the state.
It's a combination. I don't know what the exact.
I'm sorry, just, and also, can you, can you talk about Brandy Chrysler? Like, does she have, does she have a master's degree or the new library director?
She's right here. Brandy? Just a question about your background.
Do you have a master's degree?
I do. I have a master's in library and information science.
Okay. And do you, I guess I can talk to you later about it. Well, do you have any specific plans that you're planning for at the library?
We actually have a lot of specific plans. We're working on solidifying hours every week for us to have programs spring in books. So for example, this coming July, starting the 3rd of July, Thursday from 6 to 8, we're going to be doing a reading of the Pennsylvania One Book Choice, Arlo Draws an Octopus for preschool kids, along with life-size board games for older children that focuses on money management. That's to introduce us to the Kineos Hop for July. The second week, we're going to be doing Libraries of Lakes with the Conservation Bureau here in Bradford County. Then we'll be bringing in Dr., Mr. Ken Surpass, who is a Civil War reenactor who does Ulysses S. Grant. He's going to be speaking on the myths and misconceptions of our late presidents, Ulysses S. Grant. That will be on the 3rd Thursday. We will be having a chocolate tasting program, which everybody's excited about that one, the 4th Thursday, and then we'll be having the movie night on the 5th Thursday. We're also, of course, working on getting people for August and onwards. My goal is to have a situation where we have a calendar that's easily accessible so that you guys can see months in advance where we have plans, so that you can make plans and incorporate those plans for the library into your schedules as kids go back to school, as people plan their own activities, as they plan their own vacations, they can actually refer to the library's schedule and have it be consistently months in advance so that you know what's coming.
Are you, are you and the commissioner planning to reduce the budget of the library further?
I would like to do a search.
There's been no discussion about any of that, James.
Okay, those are all, those are my questions.
See, that medical assistance grant, what is that exactly?
It's medical assistance transport. It's for the, the people that call up, that need transportation to like doctors, visits to the hospital, things like that.
Okay. Are you allowed to elaborate on those exemptions by chance?
No, that's what we've got in the agenda is what we've got in the agenda.
I understand. And let's see, quite a meeting today, I'll tell you. Let's see, that letter of support for Gilroy, what is that exactly?
It's just a support letter for the, they're advocating for not allowing, right now, at this time, trucks to be able to, or weight limits to be raised on truck traffic traversing the highways, local and state roads in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, to from 80,000 to 91,000 pounds.
I see. Are they like a local company?
I don't believe so.
I think they're a nationwide entity, and it's a kind of a consortium of a variety of different related interest groups. But I think the concern here is that we have roads that already, just by virtue of having winter weather and heavy traffic on some of our roads, that are already put under a lot of stress. And the concern is if you increase the weight limit, you're going to put more, I see some people here who are representatives on boards of supervisors, borough councils. I would haste, I would probably think that there would be some concern about increasing weight on township roads or borough roads. And what that's going to do, because that puts a lot of strain on those municipalities' budgets over time. So I think that's, that's where the point of interest is.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
I need some questions from you as well. I was just wondering, I know we talked briefly about Bradford County Library, but are there any updates from the commissioners on what those future plans are to make it a destination library, as I know Mr. Malinkoff says quite often.
Right now, we're, obviously, we just brought our new librarian on board. There's a lot of, a lot of things, we're going to let her get settled, and then we will have further discussions ongoing.
I will say this, my understanding Brandy is you've put out onto the Bradford County Library's Facebook site, a survey for individuals to put in what they like, what they'd like to see more of, different things that they like, things they don't like. And I would encourage everybody to go to that, be a part of the process of informing primarily Brandy, but also us as well, because that's what she needs to hear, and I think she wants to hear.
Absolutely. In fact, I invite anybody to drop in. You are welcome to come in, down to the library as well. I'll usually be there, and I'd love to hear from the community as to what you guys would like to see in terms of your own individual needs.
That's about it.
All right.
Thank you for coming.
Darryl, I got one thing before you go.
All right.
When everybody's done.
I think everybody's done.
Okay.
Oh, one more, sorry, before you do. Sunfish Shuffle, before I forget this. Three-hour event at Sunfish Pond, walk, run, you can eat fish if you want to.
You can. It's great.
But yeah, that's coming up July 12th. So it's on our, I believe it's on our website, on our Facebook page, so if you're interested, please register. And I just want to thank everybody that had anything to do with the Run With A View. That was challenging, from what I hear, but a very successful run up on Mount Fisca, county park. Hot day, but those that participated in it enjoyed it. So, anyway, with that, go ahead, Doug.
Okay, I just don't, you know, I don't apologize for my act for Salvation Army. I have no ties, employment, financial with the Salvation Army. The only tie I have is my love for the Salvation Army. The army of fellow ringers in our county that dedicate their time, Darryl, you're one of them, you do it a lot.
Yep.
And it's cold out, and I apologize. But I will say this, one of the excitement that I had to receive that money, because donations, we lost Kmart, it's been down, and, you know, in a rush to judgment, we have, you know, every week, we have the rush to make me look bad, make our board look bad, every week. I agreed to do that action today, although I don't apologize. But let me tell you what that money does, and if Maine's still there.
She just left, so, yeah.
Okay. I think that anybody that's been to the back-to-school program for these children, which this year we didn't have a lot of money to be able to do it, to see these children of all ages get new clothes, go to school, so they fit in with all the other children that have new clothes, is unbelievable. It is so refreshing to know that we're going to be able to help children again this year. And if you don't think that's not a big deal for kids to have a new, a couple of new sets of clothes, new book bags, new, so they go to school like everyone else, then you should come to the back-to-school program and watch the looks on these kids' face, excitement on going back to school. That's why, on that day, with that vote, I don't apologize, although I agree with what we did because of race to look everybody bad. I do not want the Salvation Army to plug into this, but go to the back-to-school program. If you can donate to it, to sponsor a kid, I'm telling you, it pays dividends in those children's lives, and it is amazing. And all the people that volunteer for the Salvation Army, I'd like to thank them, because that's what I do. And also, coming up again this year, ring a bell. It is a very joyful thing. So thanks, Darryl. I'm going to the back to the library.
All right. Have a good day.
He's also the board president of the Salvation Army, correct?
So anyway, just to elaborate on that just a little bit, I can tell you, and yes, I do ring a bell down Wailusin quite frequently. And the donations, people are very happy to donate. And I'll tell you why. One of the big reasons is all those monies stay locally. All those dollars that are collected in those, in those caddles, those red caddles, that money stays locally to help families in need, children in need, and, and I will tell you the one thing about standing there, and it is cold at times, but it's really, really rewarding to stand there and do that because just the people that donated is amazing. You know, the comments that you hear about from people who donate, there are people that donate who were in need some time ago, some point in their past in their life, that they want to give back. So it's, it's really heartwarming to see that our community is as giving as it is when it comes to that. So anyway, with that.
Well said, real quick, and those are military people that the Salvation helps as well to get back home, or once they get back home to get, you know, or whatever, when you come back from overseas, World War II. I can think of Mr. Cook that donated every year, he's not with us anymore, but because of what the Salvation did for my belief in World War II, if I'm not mistaken. But yeah, and once again, what the incredible work in these times of high placement, the debt money that people donate, that there's always, just Stuart, like Joe Walsh said, we'd like to thank everybody and have a good day.
Yep, all right. Bye.
I was curious whether or not the board has come up with a definition for presses?
Mr. Chairman, I think we are now at a point where we can have a motion to adjourn.
All right, I'll second the motion. We're adjourned. Thank you.